UBSutter.live's Local Government Livestreams are presented by Plumus Lake Self-Storage in Plumus Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
Supervisor Bradford?
Here.
Supervisor Messick?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. This time I'll give a little statement on my year as the Chair. Uba County Building Department, when I first got here, used to be a place where dreams died. Now we're a place where dreams come true. "The Uba County Growth Rate is the Highest in the State," says the Appeal Democrat on December 22nd, front page above the fold. Robert Suma did that, and we had also the blossoming of Uba County in the Appeal. Measure K Citizens Report, Sheriff, Probation, Juvenile Hall, District Attorney, nine fire district, were granted the funds from Measure K as we promised. Uba County has had great CEO leaderships, Robert Bendorf and now Kevin Mallon. The Board of Supervisors has evolved to a board that works for common goals for a better Uba County lifestyle. Some of the accomplishments have been 10 years of road overlays in one year, that's a couple of years ago, Cedar Lane projects and curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in areas that we've never had before. Like the 49ers, it's a team effort by everyone who works for Uba County. Working toward common goals with solutions to problem areas as a team gives us a bright future in spite of a few negative remarks. We have a Costco, we have a complete rebuild going in Alicia Park, we're putting a drainage project in Olivehurst, we're bringing sewer and water to Wheatland, and we owe it all to the people out here, the Uba County workforce and management of Uba County. And I hope we continue this attitude in the future. Thank you for allowing me to be Chair, Chair of the Board this last year, and now we will elect a new Chair. Can I get to give you my gavel?
Yes, you do.
You can have it. There you go.
Okay, so this is the time and place for nominations for Chairman of the Board of Supervisors for 2024.
I nominate Supervisor Blazer for the Office of Chairman.
Okay, I'm gonna have to repeat this three times. Are there any further nominations for Chairman? Are there any further nominations for Chairman? Are there any further nominations for Chairman? There being no further nominations for the Office of Chairman, the nominations are hereby declared closed. I will now entertain a motion and a second.
I move the unanimous ballot to cast for Supervisor Blazer as Chairman of the Board of Supervisors for 2024.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you. So next, this is the time and place for nominations for Vice Chairman of the Board of Supervisors.
I nominate Supervisor Fuer for the Office of Vice Chairman.
Okay, are there any further nominations for Vice Chairman? Again, I'm gonna repeat this three times. Are there any further nominations for Vice Chairman? Are there any further nominations for Vice Chairman? Are there any further nominations for Vice Chairman? There being no further nominations for the Office of Vice Chairman, the nominations are declared closed. I will now entertain a motion and a second, please.
I'll make that motion to appoint, to elect Supervisor Fuer for Vice Chair.
I'll second that motion.
All those in the, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So the election of officers for the year 2024 is now being concluded. I hereby declare the reorganization portion of this meeting adjourned and turn the gavel over to Chairman Blazer.
Well, first, we're gonna see if this works. Okay. So thank you for the opportunity to be the 2024 Board Chairman. We will face some challenges this year, but we have about 800 well-qualified and dedicated employees that will help guide us through. So looking forward to this year and moving ahead to the agenda. Mary, we are going to go directly to, in addition to the agenda and consent, and Joe's gonna bring us up to date on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll be adding an item to closed session. The item number will be 12-2024. This is a complaint for damages which was served on our office yesterday. The name of the case is Estes versus Marysville Unified School District at All. The case number is CVP023-01318. And based on the date for response to this, we couldn't wait until the next meeting, needed to add it, that is an emergency item. So I just need a vote from the Board to add that item.
But we need comment?
Yes. You can add your comment.
Okay, any Board comments on this issue?
No.
And any public comment? This is going to require a roll call vote. Do we need a motion?
You do.
Yes. One, second.
Second.
Mary, you got them.
Can I go ahead and ask who did the second, please?
I think it was Supervisor, was it one of you two, right?
So Supervisor?
I'll take it.
Fuer did the motion, and Supervisor Andy Vasquez did the second?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call is Supervisor Vasquez.
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer.
Yes.
Supervisor Fuer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford.
Yes.
Supervisor Messick.
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the consent items. All matters listed under the consent are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. So first, we will have any Board comment on the consent items. We have none. Any public comment?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Messick and a second from Supervisor Bradford. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a special presentation. Receive a quarterly update from the Community Development and Service Department. This is informational only, and that's going to be Rachel Downs.
Okay, with me one moment while I get this. What do I need to type? Okay, sorry. Cut it up earlier. I don't know what the password is. All right, is that popping up for everybody? Okay, wonderful. Good morning, Chairman. Members of the Board, Rachel Downs. I am your Business Engagement Manager out of Community Development, and this is always one of my favorite presentations to give to your Board throughout the year, or throughout the quarter, excuse me. And we are gonna cover some great projects coming out of our Planning Department, some updates from the Building Department, as well as Public Works, the Airport, and so on, just a lot happening in development in the last quarter of 2023. But before we dive into those more specific projects, I'm gonna invite up Kevin Perkins, who is going to talk to us a little bit about one of the great tools that we launched last quarter through our Planning Department called Gridx, and I'll let Kevin take it away, and when you're ready, just let me know, and I've got the video prep for you.
Thank you again, Kevin Perkins. I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to talk about our new and exciting zoning tool that we put online about a couple of months ago. You know, I remember when I started here at the county in 2006, when someone would come to the county to ask what their zoning was, we literally had these Assessor Parcel Maps in this black book that were, you know, yay big, and we'd open up this book to colored pages that we would hand color to look at and say, oh, your zoning is AE8. And, you know, during, during that time as a young planner, I'd always think like, this, we gotta have a better way of doing this. There has to be a better way of doing it, you know? And to piggyback off of Supervisor Vasquez's comments about dreams coming true in 2023, my dream came true from being a young planner, that we have a new online tool that will provide property information and zoning maps and a lot of really cool things. So what I want to talk about is our Gridx tool, and Gridx really does three things. One, it provides, it's digitized our development code, which really isn't that novel. We have a couple different areas in the county that MuniCode digitized our development code, and we've done that previously on the Planning Department's page. But the two biggest things that it's done is, one, it allows an online search function for people to put in their address, or if they're searching for properties, to put in an address or an APN number, and the zoning of the property will come up, and also different property details will also come up. And the third thing, it does provide a search function. And so a really detailed search function, and I'll talk about in a second. But, you know, the importance to our customers is, you know, in the past, you know, again, it's been, I've been here 18 years, and we've never had the opportunity for people to go online to find out this information on their own. You know, a lot of times, people have to come in and either call, email, come in in person to find out this information. And so it's a really cool and exciting tool. So one of the things, I'm gonna show you one of the functions. We created a six-minute video, I don't want to bore you guys with all six minutes, so we've cut out about a minute snippet that shows the property search, and I'm gonna have Rachel go over that right now.
Or at least we're going to attempt to, as long as technology cooperates. Speaking of technology, hang on one second here. It does not, sorry, and there we go. Been a little slow this morning.
Quickly see zoning data and parcel attributes for any parcel in Uba County. Head to Zoning. All you have to do is type the address or parcel number you're interested in. Let's do 1999 North Beal Road in Linda, California. When I click, information about this property appears on the screen. You'll see we have overlays, zoning information, property record details, maximum footprint, setbacks, everything you need to know about this site can be found in one place. When you see blue links, you can hover to view a tooltip, and then you can also go directly to the section of text that is impacting this site. You'll see Chapter 11.08 right here. Again, anywhere there's a blue link, tooltips and further links appear. Through a zone check, you can print this property report, you can download it to your device, and we also include a QR code so that you can share it with colleagues, clients, and staff at any time on any device. The third Gridx application available to Uba County citizens and staff is MuniMap. MuniMap is the most advanced 3D zoning map available on the market. To get started, just click the map in the top right corner, and if you're lost, you can always visit the Planning Department page on Uba County's website, uva.org. Zoom into the map using the strong functions on your mouse.
So this, this next section was gonna get into the, the search function, and I, you know, the example on this video takes like two or three minutes, so I didn't really want to bore you guys with that. But, you know, effectively, you know, we're one of probably five jurisdictions in the state that have as detailed of a search function on anything land use related. You know, right now, what you can do is really interesting and cool, that's gonna be a great resource for our development community and staff. For example, if someone, you know, if we were working with one of our affordable housing development partners, and they wanted to find a property that was zoned high-density residential that was at least six acres in size, that was located in an area with sewer and water, we would just go into that search function and put in all those parameters, and then out of the 30, you know, plus thousand parcels that exist in Uba County, the search function would narrow it down to whatever ones that meet that criteria, so like eight of them. And then we would be able to show the developer exactly where those properties were located and different property details, which is a super cool function. We've had a lot of really good feedback. Our, our real estate and appraising community is absolutely super excited about this. They no longer have to, to call to find out zoning and various information on properties, they can do it online, and it's accurate information. So, you know, I wanted to, you know, again, I'm just really excited about what we have in this program. This Gridx program is consistent with your recently adopted strategic plan. Under the County Services section, we had some milestones that needed to be met by 2026 about automating department services and providing more online services. And so, you know, we're really happy to report back that we've, we're starting to meet those milestones, and, and just, you know, a little, in my presentation, we are also working on a couple other items that should be pretty interesting, that will help on these online services. One, we're working on a fee calculator, so if someone's looking to build a house, they can put in their address, where the, their address, and how big of a house they're looking to build, and this program will spit out like a fee calculation that will show them how much, you know, an estimated cost on how much it would cost to build the house with county fees, and then it'll also go further to the point where it'll show what construction costs could cost. So it's a pretty cool feature. And we have another feature that's a little bit more nerdy and staff-based on vehicle miles traveled or VMT, which applicants will be able to put in details of their project, and it'll spit out some VMT information that's, that's needed for secret purposes. So that ends my presentation. You know, I don't want, I know Rachel has a lot more to talk about, I don't really want to take up too much time. I'm here to answer any questions, if you guys have any quick questions. All right? Thank you so much.
Through the Chair.
Through the Chair.
That's me. Through the Chair.
You can go first.
I just scanned your code there and did it on my phone, yeah, it's very, very easy to use.
Yes, it's really super friendly, or super user-friendly, so.
So. Are you done?
Yep.
Okay. So Kevin, this is great. There's one phrase that I've used forever, and it applies to banks, restaurants, governments, and that is to make it easy for customers to do business with you. If you just remember that, no matter what business you're in, you'll probably be successful, and this is a great example of that, so thank you.
You're welcome, and I agree. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. And I also want to say, from my perspective, coming from business engagement and assisting in development, Kevin gave the example of affordable housing, and I would also like to second that example of when we have businesses that are coming to the county and looking to start, relocate, or expand in the area. Similarly, they're looking for maybe things that are zoned general industrial, light industrial, ag industrial, general commercial, so on and so forth. And so I can choose whatever that type of zoning is based on the operation of the business, and then similarly, sort and filter parcels that would be appropriate for them to expand to, which just makes us more efficient and it makes us more customer-friendly. So it also has a great use case for business and development. And I also want to, on behalf of all of the leadership from Community Development, really give a lot of accolades to Kira and both Robert, who worked very diligently on bringing this tool to life. They spent a lot of staff time working on this, and so I just want to recognize them as well for really leading this project. So moving on, additional excitement coming out of our Planning Department, never a dull moment there. We, you'll find on this slide, just a quick high-level overview of new projects that have come through during the quarter. One of the specific ones I want to call out on the right-hand side is that in collaboration with Lafco and the City of Wheatland, we're very happy to support the proposed expansion of Pottery World's manufacturing facility and footprint in and around the city of Wheatland. Pottery World, if you're not familiar with the company, has current locations in both Rockland and Eldorado Hills, those are more their retail locations, but what they have in Wheatland is a small manufacturing facility. They're one of the largest selections of outdoor living furnishings, fountains, pottery, and home accessories in Northern California. Jim Rada is the owner, and his team have been, like I said, currently operating manufacturing out of Wheatland, but they have purchased 120 acres just north of the city of Wheatland and are currently in the process of annexing that property into the city and would continue to expand their manufacturing footprint. So great, great team effort there, and glad to support them through that. Additionally, on North Beal Road and Lindhurst Avenue, we have received an application to subdivide a large commercial parcel. This is directly behind the Popeye's Chicken, and you can kind of see on the left-hand side the edge of the Walmart parking lot. We expect to receive, excuse me, this shopping center will be called North Beal Commons Shopping Center. We do expect to start receiving building permits at this site that will be processed concurrently, so we can expect likely in next quarter's update to start sharing some building permit updates of what will be expected to happen on this site. Here you'll find a summary of additional land use projects that were actually approved this last quarter in a handful of small residential lot splits. Specifically, I want to call out three projects that were approved. One is the operation of Blue Ruby Farms. This is a three-bedroom agricultural homestay in Loma Rica. And so in search of, let's call it a tranquil haven, Paul and Stephanie Lederia arrived in Uba County to really escape the urban hustle and bustle from their previous Bay Area life. They wanted to share their passion for food, land, community, and regenerative agriculture with a warm and inviting community. Here, they could engage and impart knowledge about holistic cooking, lifestyle, effective and effective land management practices. So we want to express our appreciation for the contributions that Paul and Stephanie are making to ag tourism in Uba County, and we're excited to support them and continue working with them. Additionally, the county recorded two subdivision track maps this quarter. One is Rio del Oro Village Number 17, which created an additional 68 residential lots. And secondly is Rio del Oro Village Number 19, which created an additional 45 single-family residential lots, and both of those are in Plumus Lake. Moving over to our Building Department, we are glad to announce that despite the changes in interest rates, supply chain issues, the cost to building, and any other challenges that can present in the housing market, our Uba County housing market has actually presented relatively resilient and stable throughout 2023. What you'll see here on the far right-hand side is that we continue to average about 400 single-family homes receiving final occupancy year over year. So we did have quite a surge in 2022, but you can see again, the far right-hand side 2023 came in on par there, and so that's, that's an exciting number to see. You can see kind of in the chart in the middle, excuse me, that the third quarter, the third and fourth quarter of 2023 did lag a little bit behind the fourth quarters of the prior years, but if the Fed does in fact lower interest rates this following, sorry, this current year in 2024, then we could potentially see that number kind of jump back up to what we're expecting. So that's a great overview on single-family production home building in Uba County. And then I want to move over to commercial building permits. Here you have a quick summary of other improvements, expansions, and even a few newcomers to our commercial building spaces. The couple that I want to call out for you specifically was Gen 2 Glass. This is a family-owned company that was previously operating out of the Bay Area, and they've moved to our Airport Industrial Park in one of the facilities that we lovingly call our Buzz Boxes, and they, they cut, coat, or film commercial glass and will provide a much-needed service to our commercial builders in Uba County. They are relatively new here, this is still an active tenant improvement, so there's much more opportunity for us to learn about their company and their total economic impact in Uba County. But generally, I just wanted to present that information to your Board, and we will make sure to give them a nice, warm welcome to Uba County. Secondly, Supervisor Fuer, you'll be very excited about this one. We are very excited to announce that O'Reilly's Auto Parts is planning on expanding their footprint in Uba County and opening a second location off McGowan Parkway, right behind the Dollar General. While this building permit has been applied for, I do want to caveat that we don't necessarily expect construction, even if it is soon approved, we don't necessarily expect construction right away because there is other land division and some infrastructure that needs to be built at or around the site. There's some other moving parts to this project, but we do have a building permit from O'Reilly's in Olivehurst. And moving over to our Public Works Department, you can see a very extensive list of projects here, so I want to give accolades to Public Works. Again, there is no shortage of excitement and investment in infrastructure there, but to be brief, we just want to recall out the $48 million investment in Olivehurst for drainage and road improvements. Just a quick review here, I know your Board has heard about this project, and you're also excited about it. This will cover 26,000 feet of new storm drains, 52,000 feet of new sidewalks and bike lanes, and address 13 different roads. And lastly, I know Jason is in the airport, Jason is in the house, and I'm gonna share a little update on the airport for you. There is a lot of movement in development and businesses at, at the airport, in our county-owned properties, as well as what I like to call kind of our sphere of influence in the industrial park around that. One specific one would be the recent location of Hana Company, a high-volume composite manufacturing company, to one of our airport-owned real estate assets. So at Hana's headquarters in Paso Robles, they do manufacture composite parts for helicopters and other equipment. Here in Olivehurst, they are planning to manufacture fiberglass domes for communication equipment, kind of continuing on that operation of that facility, as well as considering expansion into other fields like marine vehicles or transportation vehicles. But basically, they manufacture fiberglass composites, and so we're excited again to welcome them to Uba County and support them as they expand their footprint. That is what we have for you for a quarterly development update. I know, it's a snooze fest, but all joking aside, there is a lot happening in development in Uba County, it keeps us busy, your staff is very excited to work on these projects, and we appreciate the leadership and support from your Board on all of these. I'm happy to take any questions.
Rachel, I look forward to this always. Is this your, how many have we, have we done of these quarterly?
I think we're about a year in.
Yeah.
Maybe plus or minus a quarter.
Yeah, it's a real valuable tool when we're talking to constituents. Now, they can access all this on the website.
Correct.
And then if I want to get some hard copies, you'll get those to me.
Absolutely. If anybody wants to access it on uva.org, the, one of the top tabs is Business, and they just jump over to Yes to Uba, or you can go just straight to Yes to Uba, and under Developing, we do try to keep transparent communication of what's happening in development, and this, this update is part of that.
Well, it's been a great, award-winning program, so thanks. Any other Board comments or questions?
Through the Chair. Great job, Rachel. It's amazing the progress that you've made in one year period of time. People are scratching their heads in other counties on how can we do that, too? It made a difference. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thanks again. So Mary, Mary, you're gonna talk about public So Mary, Mary, you're going to talk about public communications.
Yes, any person may speak about any subject of concern, provided it is within the jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors and is not already on today's agenda. The total amount of time allotted for receiving such public communication shall be limited to a total of 15 minutes, and each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors. Please note, no board action can be taken on comments made under this heading. And through the chair, we have received one card, and it is from Tony Farley.
Morning, Tony.
Tony, Tony Farley from South Sur County, South U.C. Here, thank you for, for your new title, Chair Chairman. And of course, I believe, I believe him, John is Vice Chairman, hopefully, right?
No. Seth.
Seth is Vice Chairman, and you're Chairman. That's good. Today, I see Carl Baines and, and, and Steve from Sur County, Steve Smith, the professor. Today, I saw the Earth Sheriff and Sheriff Day, two-star or four-star. I see probation chief. Thank you for your service. Thank you for serving too, Andy Vasquez as former chairman. Thank you for your service, including lawyer and county administrator. Thank you, Rachel, to Rachel, Paya Rachel, and the business Rachel. Thank you. Thank you.
And that is all. All right. Okay, so we're going to move to county departments. We have four, four items. These are all action items, which means they're all going to be voted on. So our first one is 645. We're recommending the nomination of two representatives and an alternate to the Feather River Quality Management District Board of Directors for 2024. So Mary, do we need a nomination on that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I think Gary's going to do.
Yeah, through, through the chair, I'd like to nominate Supervisors Messick and Blazer to serve as the representatives, and Supervisor Vasquez to serve as the alternate.
Okay, do we have any board comment on that? Apparently not. And public comment? No. So we have a motion and a second. And Mary, you caught who did that? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the second item is item 658. Let me grab the glasses here. Okay, Community Development and Services. Adopt resolution authorizing Community Development and Services Director to complete the purchase of four airport properties and to execute any and all further documents upon review and approval of the county council. Good morning.
Through Chairman Blazer, I would like to say good morning to the entire board and introduce myself. I am Jason Copping. I am your Yuba County Airport Manager. And I do want to briefly talk about these airport parcels. That's what I'm looking for. And to start off, I just want to say thank you. It's an honor and a privilege to be here this morning at this first meeting of the year. To jump right in, I want to make sure that we're all looking and thinking of the same pieces of property. So to kind of just bring us into what we're talking about on the airport, it's on the east side, right off of Arboga Road, of course bounded by Earl Road to the north, McGowan Parkway to the south. At the entrance, there is visible some large hanger structures, and these are parcels that run easterly, northeasterly, all the way to Arboga Road, starting from those hanger structures. More specifically, as we zoom in on the four parcels in question, you see them outlined in red. You see their assessor parcel numbers being given inside their box constraints. Just a quick summary of these parcels. This purchase was introduced as an opportunity to the board at the end of Quarter One in one of Rachel Downs's Yuba County Enterprise Solutions Quarterly Updates. The board then granted authority to the Director of Community Development and myself, the Airport Manager, to pursue this purchase in the following month. These parcels have been privately owned and vacant for over 20 years. They have been for sale for many years. Since Ms. Mata and myself became stewards of the airport, these have always been for sale. Currently, we have an accepted offer, sales agreement, for $220,000 to purchase these four parcels. An appraisal was conducted by an independent appraiser, which substantiates the sales price. And again, much like we discussed in that quarterly update last year, these parcels would be an asset to the airport because they will be future airport revenue generation potential, and they're, they're also attractive to aviation businesses. And by purchasing them, now the airport is in a position where we can start to move forward, progress in that direction, to, to make the airport even more attractive. The increased activity in fuel sales will be great for the airport. Services and support for aviation. Again, our community of airport users benefit from any businesses that choose to relocate to our airport. And then any businesses that do come, there's the potential for job creation, and we want to call that out. Really quick, the ask here before the board today is simply to adopt a resolution authorizing the Community Development and Services Agency Director to complete the purchase of the four aforementioned airport parcels and execute all documents to close escrow. I'm here again before the board and through the chair. Would like to take it back to you for any questions from the board.
Do we have any public comment or questions? I mean, board comment or questions?
Through the chair. My only comment is, these parcels have been vacant for a lot longer than 20 years. And really, it was a plan many, many, many years ago to extend the road out there to service the private hangars that are currently there and these. And I believe the only way that'll ever get done is by the county purchasing these and completing the infrastructure to these parcels and then being able to develop and lease them out.
Any other board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none. I think we have a motion.
A second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Again, thank you.
Thanks, Jason. All right, so we're going to move along to item number 650, 2023. County Administrator, approve professional services agreement with Barbie Robinson to assess Yuba County's existing behavioral health system. Provide technical assistance, inflammation, implementation support, and authorize chair to execute. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on your promotion. Sean Powers, Assistant County Administrator. Before your board today is a contract that we've proposed to bring forward. This effort was included in the county's adopted strategic plan of one of our top 12 priorities to work on behavioral health. I do have a change that I want to include before I get into the meat of the presentation. We did receive some requests for revisions to the scope of work from our colleagues at Sutter County. We received some interest to make some revisions on Friday. We received some comments on Monday. And literally before you right now, it's hot off the press, still warm off the printer, is the revisions that we've incorporated in to try to capture some of their requests to work collaboratively with Sutter County. So the changes are limited to just the scope of work attachment A. That's just four pages within the contract. All of their areas remain unchanged. Most of the changes were to Phase One with some changes in the vernacular and some words, and with one change in Section 1.31 in Phase Two. 1K in Phase One was actually deleted, and those hours were distributed over into 1B and 1C just to kind of keep the contract amount at 198K roughly. And the total number of hours for the work to be performed, performed the same. So depending on the action of your board after my presentation, we'll make sure those changes are captured and included in there. And I also have additional copies available if any member from the public has those. So our whole purpose to engage with Ms. Robinson was to provide a new resource, help gather information, and provide a technical resource for the county as we ever evolve to learn more about the behavioral health items. I'm a finance and land use guy. We talk about these behavioral items, behavioral health items, and you can get lost in the vernacular alone. We are expecting significant changes coming down from the state in the world of behavioral health. We think this resource will help us, as well as Sutter County, evaluate those items. We were able to, very early this morning, run those changes in the scope of work through Ms. Robinson, our consultant. We have kind of a tentative agreement that those changes are acceptable. I accept this contract will evolve as we go forward. I believe this effort will take about three to five years. This is not a short game. We've had budgeted in this item and adopted in our county-wide budget to start the process this year, and we will include this in the budget process going forward to do this. I am and expect there will probably be some amendments down the road as we kind of get through this and gather more information. Ms. Robinson is recognized by NACO as an expert in behavioral health items. She has 20-plus years of experience in this. She's worked in Sonoma County's behavioral health. There is not a large pool of consultants available to provide this kind of work. You're either retired or very busy. So through a series of conversations with her, we think she's a readily available resource to help us just gather information in this process. With that, I would open up to the board for any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Through the chair. With this new study, we'll actually have access to the figures of the funds available from the state for specifically Yuba County and?
Included in the scope of work would be to have conversations with the state to identify how the funds are allocated and made available to both counties or available to break them both out. That request has been made to the state before. It didn't really have a lot of response. It's going to take more effort just to identify information, and we can gather and then be able to report back on that.
Okay, so basically, you're gathering information so they can make their study, and then we get to decide where, where we're going to go with behavioral health. Is that correct?
Absolutely. At this point, I couldn't tell you which way the prevailing winds would be blowing, other fact is trying to get as much information. And again, Ms. Robinson is just a technical resource to help us interpret that information, but those recommendations coming back to your board as we move forward.
Thank you. I know we've made some progress on some meetings prior to today. Now, more than ever, it's critical that we get a really smooth operation between the two counties. We have a growing, exploding homeless situation. A lot of it goes back to behavioral health, and then we also have a lot of new mandates constantly coming from Sacramento. So we really need to get our, our team together, so thanks. Any other board comment? And I think I have at least one public comment.
Through the chair, yes, we have Steve Smith.
Good morning, Honorable Chair and Supervisor Steve Smith, Sutter County CAO. Happy to be here, and thanks for the ability and time to comment. I want to thank administration for allowing us to add some last-minute comments and changes to the scope of work. Sutter County has been operating this bi-county behavioral health system, the only one in the state, for about 51 years. And it's something that is so intrinsically wrapped up into the state that, yes, when we requested financial breakdown of information from the state, they said they couldn't give that to us. So it's going to take quite an effort to separate that. I do know, population-wise, a slightly higher percentage of Yuba County residents did access services over the past year than what the overall population percentage of Yuba County versus Sutter County is. So we know we're getting services to Yuba County residents. However, I think we all agree it's difficult to, you know, we, we have a regional approach, so we're not separating out a Sutter County approach versus a Yuba County approach on our normal day-to-day operations. So I think if we can work collaboratively, collaboratively moving forward and, you know, see if it is in the best interest to continue current operations or to bifurcate and have each county work independently in the future, then I think this evaluation will help that. And, and we're very open to that as well. As each county grows, it does become more and more difficult to partner. Though we're partners on so many things, and probably more than any other counties in the state, I believe. So we just have an interest in working together on this, and it will be a significant amount of staff time that we have to plan for to assist the consultant. But I'm glad that you have reached out to someone and found someone that's very qualified and with California experience. And we'll just look forward to going from here. And also that there may be a need for some related contracts on the Sutter County side, both for collaboration and release of information to the consultant as we go through this. So thank you.
Thank you. So having no further comments and public comments or board comments, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second.
Well, is your motion with these changes?
Do we need to?
Do we need to make the motion with the changes?
With the changes indicated in the package that were given, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I, I would have a comment, I'm sorry. I just really appreciated the collaborative words and the regionalization words. I think that you're absolutely right. Whenever we can have cost savings by regionalizing, we should always do so. And whenever we can collaborate with our partners across the river, we should always do so. So any direction to staff would be that we should always look to those factors to make the best evaluations of constituents.
Thank you.
Through the chair. On that comment, you know, we will also evaluate as a board whether we stay with Sutter County in this endeavor. And after the, after this study is done, then we make that decision. But we're, we're not going to.
Well, we fully, fully expect.
Effective behavioral.
We fully expect the outcome of this agreement to really give us some good guidance. So I think we're in a pretty good place. So I think we're, we haven't voted yet, have we? Are we ready to vote?
Sure.
Did we vote?
We did vote, but, but I had a quick follow-up comment as well.
Okay, one more comment.
Through the chair. I just wanted to thank staff for the updates to this document and working collaboratively, collaboratively with our partners to address their concerns. So thank you.
So I think we do see a light. So thanks, Sean.
Mr. Chairman, if we could just have the board, or the board clerk vocalize any opposed. I didn't catch that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Supervisor Andy Vasquez, a second by Supervisor John Messick. There was five ayes, and any opposed? Zero. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. So our last item is item 2-2024. For the Board of Supervisors to approve letter to Governor Newsom regarding a better pathway for the Bay Delta. And I think that Mr. Willie Willacy from the Yuba Water Agency is going to give us that.
Yeah, thanks, Supervisors. Chairman Blazer, Vice Chairman Furher, congratulations to your new roles. And Supervisors, good morning, how you doing? I've been asked to explain what this ask is for Northern California Water Association, otherwise known as NAWCA, their industry organization in the north part of the state representing SAC Valley water users. There, the ask today is for the county to sign on a SAC Valley county-wide coalition letter to support the Agreements for Healthy Rivers and Landscapes. Well, what does that mean for us? I got to get into a little level of detail here. Yuba Water Agency is a member of NAWCA. We also support the, Yuba Water Agency also supports the Agreements for Healthy Rivers and Landscapes. Right now, the State Water Resources Control Board is going through their update of the Bay Delta Water Quality Control Plan. And generally, in that update, there are two paths forward. There's the unimpaired flow or flow-only approach, which would require water users like Yuba Water Agency to release a certain, certain amount of flow for Bay Delta habitat water quality. There's also the Agreements for Healthy Rivers and Landscapes, previously known as the voluntary agreements. We've been working on the voluntary agreements now for six years. In March of 2022, we signed a term sheet with the governor to implement the Agreements for Healthy Rivers and Landscapes. And what this does, instead of a regulatory flow-only approach, this provides flow from the water users in a voluntary method, but also provides habitat construction. the water users in a voluntary method, but also provides habitat construction and restoration, science, funding, and collaboration. So this is a new way of doing things. This is a way that we can positively impact the species in the delta through a holistic approach versus a regulatory approach. It's preferred by most water users in the SAC Valley, and today we're asking the county to sign on to a coalition letter that NAWCA is putting forward with other SAC Valley counties that will be delivered to the governor, but will also be included in the comment letters to the State Water Resources Control Board for Phase Two of the Bay Delta Plan Update that are due next Friday.
Anybody from the board have any comments on this?
Through the chair. I'd like to ask that all five supervisors sign this if at all possible. Harry's more weight.
What was that?
He asked for all five supervisors to sign it, so...
Yes, I think that's a great idea.
And just to kind of add to that, just to make sure that we're covered, the letter that I think is in the packet does have signature spots for all five supervisors. There is some discussion at NAWCA about sending one letter with the logo of every county that's signing on, on that letter. Should that happen, I imagine that probably just the chair would sign that on behalf of the county. So I think the letter, it's presented today, it's all five, but in the future, it could be just the chair if that's what comes before us, so.
Well, as we all know, the board is going to do everything we possibly can to help support the agency since you're such a critical part of this whole organization. So any other board comments? Any public comments? No.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Board, we pass it. Okay, so we're going to move on to a public hearing. This one's a little trickier, so I'm going to ask Joe and Mary to guide us through this.
Okay, so I will read the verbiage. If challenging court the action or decision of the Yuba County Board of Supervisors regarding a zoning, planning, land use, or environmental protection matter made at any hearing described in this notice, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at such hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the Yuba County Board of Supervisors at or prior to such hearing. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per individual or group. And we do have Agenda Item 603-2023, Sheriff Coroner Ordinance, Hold Public Hearing, Waive Second Reading, and Adopt Ordinance Amending Military Equipment Use Policy to Chapter 2.155, Title II of the Yuba County Ordinance Code.
Okay, Joe, do we open the hearing?
So you can take the presentation from the Sheriff's Department when he can, essentially, you'll open the public hearing. The public will have the opportunity to comment. Once the board and the public has commented and no further comments are sought, you can close the public hearing.
Okay, so the public hearing is open. And we have comments?
We do. Good morning, gentlemen, and congratulations, Chairman Blazer.
Thank you.
Under new appointment. Just as the clerk of the board mentioned, a kind of a mouthful. We want to hold a public hearing, also waive the second reading, request that we waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending the military equipment use policy that we have for all military equipment that we acquire. The amendment that we're requesting for is to include what is known as a mine-resistant, ambush-protected vehicle, which is better known as an MRAP. Basically, it's a large armored vehicle. So this vehicle that we're looking to acquire seats about 10 to 12 personnel inside it. It can be used for rescuing of downed personnel in dangerous situations. Also, it's got an elevated platform on it, so we'd be able to use it in the more rural areas of our county and additionally to any type of high-water events or flooding that occurs within the county. The great thing about it is we are looking to acquire this vehicle through the Defense Logistics Agency 1033 program, which is coming at no cost to the county whatsoever, short of the regular maintenance of the vehicle once we acquire it. So I will open it up to any questions anybody has.
Just for clarification, this is not another SWAT vehicle. This is support.
It can be used in a rescue-type situation, whether that be a critical incident involving a crime that was taking place or albeit a natural disaster as well. It has multi-uses.
I'm just trying to picture it in my mind. Maybe you should have brought a picture. But it's, it's like, it's a used vehicle. I shouldn't say used, but it is used. About what year is it?
I, you know, this came from, it was built by the military for use in the Afghanistan War. So I'm assuming it's probably 10 to 12 years old. I don't have the exact age on it.
It's a little more than off of a F-150 chassis.
A little bit more than that, yes. It's got the Caterpillar diesel engine to it.
Okay. All right. Any board questions? No comments? Questions? Public comments? Questions? And I think we're ready to exercise a motion.
I say move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
I...
Sorry, guys, roll call on this one.
Oh, it is a roll call. Roll call vote.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Yes.
Supervisor Blazer?
Yes.
Supervisor Fuer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Yes.
Supervisor Messick?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we got quite a bit of correspondence. Mary, do you want to just scan, let us know what we got?
Okay, we have actually seven agenda items. The first one is 634, Notice from the National Wildlife Service, you can comment on this one, the Western State Quit under Endangered Peaches Act. We have 639-2023, a letter from Loma Rica Brown Valley, Community Services, District Department.
Initiation of a roadside vegetation weed control program. 640-2023, email from Charles Sharp regarding issues in the Yuba County foothills. 642-2023, notice from the California Water Board's State Water Resources Control Board, Division of Drinking Water Regarding Local Primary Agency Annual Evaluations for Fiscal Year 2223. 643-2023, is a notice from the University of California Cooperative Extension, Sutter and Yuba Counties, 2023 Annual Bi-County Farm Advisors Report. 644-2023, it's a notice from Disability Rights of California Regarding Request for Yuba County Board of Supervisors to Defer Implementation of California Senate Bill 43 until January 1, 2026. And Agenda Item 665-2023, Notice from the California Water Board State Water Resources Control Board Regarding Reorganization of Drinking Water Field Operation Branches. That is all.
Thanks, Mary. At this point, we're going to do some board and staff members' reports. I think we'll start with Supervisor Vasquez.
I just have one item I talked a lot earlier, but I'd like to thank Sheriff Anderson and District Attorney Curry for putting in writing your opinion of SB 2. And thank you very much for taking it by the horns and letting the public know how you feel about it.
Thank you. Supervisor Fuer?
Building off of government overreach and whimsy of elected leaders, tax season's been extended, or sorry, the beginning to January 29th. So I know how it feels to be a victim of the government not doing what they're supposed to when they're supposed to. So that's why I'm always encouraging us to not echo our higher-ups, but do a fantastic and efficient job at the local level. And we're doing food giveaways in Olivehurst because we love to give away food. So I think we have one planned for a couple weeks from now, over the weekend, a couple actually. Food Bank will be at the DFW giving out food on the night.
Supervisor Bradford?
Nothing this time.
Okay. Supervisor Messick?
I have a few things. First off, I'd like to thank Andy for being the chair last year and leading us through the year. Anybody that attended my Browns Valley swine-pulled pork dinner last night, I don't know if any of you guys made it up there, but I was actually able to purchase a dinner for all the on-duty foothill deputies, and at least three of them came through and picked up dinner and appreciated that. I'd like to thank The Country Butcher, they donated the meat for that dinner, and Circa 53 BBQ for cooking the meat and donating the cold slaw, and Charlie Matthews for donating all the incidentals and drinks. It was a good dinner for our fundraiser up in Loma Rica. And piggybacking on that, as commander of the Yuba Sutter Sheriff's Aero Squadron, we're planning to have a fundraiser dinner May 4th at the Yuba County Airport. It's going to be outside, so you guys be watching. I'll get you all the info. Hope you all support. I was hoping our colleagues from Sutter County, we're still in the audience because we do support both Yuba County sheriffs and Sutter County sheriffs and the code enforcement from both counties, so.
Okay, thank you.
With what we're trying to do with that, so I'll let Sheriff Anderson and Nick know. We're hoping to raise enough funds so we don't have to, currently, we turn in fuel bills and the Sheriff's Department reimburses the pilots for their fuel. Everything else is volunteered. We're hoping to raise enough money so we can offer these services for free to both counties, and hopefully we'll get used more and get some more work done for the Sheriff's Departments.
Okay, staff reports? Joe?
Nothing from our office today, Mr. Chairman.
And Kevin?
Just a reminder to the board that January 23rd, the next board meeting, that afternoon, we're going to have a workshop with the board to talk about the strategic plan and where we're at with accomplishing the top 12 strategic priorities this fiscal year, and then what do we want to look forward to for next fiscal year.
Through the chair. I will be absent. I have a school I need to go to. Thank you.
Mary? That'll do it. Mary, do you want anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, well, we're plunging and what's up?
Through the chair, can I make one more comment?
One more.
So I brought this up before last year, and I want to bring it up again now that you're the new chair. If we could do our chair comments at the beginning of the meeting when the audience is full and could hear everything, that might be better than after everybody disperses.
We can do anything we want. Okay, plunging into the new year, there's so many negative things, it's easy to get overwhelmed on the negative side, but we have so many positive things in the county. So we're going to try to periodically bring those into more focus and see how we can help these positive agencies and people prosper in the county. So looking forward to the new year, and I think that we, at this point, will go to closed session. We were going to take about approximately a 10-minute break.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, on closed session item 657-2023, post, after posting the agenda, we've received seven letters in support of an appointment for an individual. Those are available for review with the clerk if anybody would like to see those. Do we need to talk about any of the closed session items? Or we just say we have them? Okay, so at this point, we're just adjourning for the closed session. And it's 10:03.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.